Everybody's really, everybody's snowy.
How are things in the water business?
Sorry.
There hasn't been any shortage of uh.
Well, yeah.
Been able to make any water.
No, we're, we're, we're good. We've got plenty each and plenty of, we put them together, you know?
Just make everybody up.
That's good.
It's really good.
That was fantastic.
I just wish they were permanent.
Got my second shot.
I wish they were permanent.
Was good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, about it now.
Yes.
Quote for half of thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
I'll tell you what I'd percent rather than total.
See all the stuff that have written down that you don't have written down?
Have nothing. What do you do?
And I will pick what we can do. Faster when you have it relaxed and you get our full day.
Definitely.
Such a great. They did such a good job. You know, they're doing such a great job. Gee, Christmas. What are you doing, Doc? It's a good scene, man.
January school, you gonna take your daughter out?
No, I, come on.
I have six o'clock.
I've got two. You good to go?
Call to order council meeting for February eighth if everyone would stand for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to your republic for which the saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Dear Lord, blessed decisions of this body, guide us tonight and the future as well. Amen.
We have real call.
Mr. McNeese?
Here.
Mr. Ravellette?
Here.
Mr. Stangle?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
In attendance.
Mr. Gornau?
Present.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mr. Salters?
Here.
Mayor Yocum?
Here.
Uh, adoption of the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salters, sent by Vice President Grove to adopt the agenda as presented.
Question.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the agenda is adopted. Need approval of the January twenty-fifth minutes.
Uh, make a motion to approve the January twenty-fifth minutes.
Second.
Motion by President Salters, sent by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Question.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
And by vote of seven to zero, those are approved. Petitions, memorials, remonstrances. Committee chair reports.
Public Safety Committee met last Thursday, uh, here at City Hall. Uh, we met with firefighters from Vincent's Fire Department. Uh, we had a great turnout. A lot of firefighters, uh, came to the meeting. We had a fantastic exchange of information. After that meeting, I really had a, a good feeling, um, about it. Um. One thing that we got accomplished was we did get a, kind of a talk group started, uh, where we could actually, if they have questions, they don't want to wait till the meeting, we can, we can answer them, or the firefighter can talk amongst themselves in it. Um, and also, we asked them to kind of look at the, the merit board, what they would want it to look like, um, either five or three guys and, uh, and who they would want to put on there. Um, I got some ideas about who they would like to put on the merit board, but, um, and we'll probably talk more about that at our next meeting. And, uh, but after that meeting, I really did have a good, good feeling about it. Uh, Area Plan Commission met on Tuesday evening at the Vincent's Water Plant, and for those who were in attendance, I know you enjoyed. Uh, three-hour-long meeting, um, to, to hear individuals, uh, yea and nay for the solar farm. Um, in the end, uh, you know, we were charged with the duty of, I believe, uh, from our attorney, uh, that I, that we are charged with the duty at the Area Plan Commission to determine if we are following the ordinance, if the application meets the ordinance. Um, next meeting will take place on, I think it's, uh, first Tuesday in March, six P M. at the Vincent's Water Plant again, which provided an excellent space for that meeting, um, not only in a time of, uh, COVID and social distancing, but I think it would provide, uh, a good meeting place in any large meeting, uh, in general, where there's going to be a lot of people and need to speak. Uh, it worked exceptionally well. So, that's it.
Councilman McNeese, is that going to be set up the same way this next meeting?
Uh, it will be. I don't know about the being able to be virtual and be into the meeting. Do you know? I don't know if it is or not. I, I know that you, if I had to guess, there will be a link provided where people can come again, uh, virtually, uh, both in, attend in the audience and virtually.
Um, and too, I want to thank you for keeping us informed. I know one of the complaints was people weren't informed, and obviously here, you've kept us extremely informed with that. I think on the, every time that you have a meeting, you come back with an update of, uh, that project, because that's one of the big things that you discuss. So, I do appreciate that, keeping not just us on the council informed, but the citizens of Vincent's informed. So, I do thank you for that.
Okay.
You have anything on the Pantheon?
They don't.
Now, we'll have a later discussion about, um, Knox County, you know, solid waste and the great things that are happening there. The mayor and I have been on that board, uh, representing the city interests. We asked, uh, Michelle Smith to come talk to us. That'll be later in our meeting. Uh, we've kind of kept some things, because there's a lot of great things that are happening. Michelle's going to go in-depth on that, and we wanted to bring her here, uh, tonight to discuss that. So, later this meeting, we'll have that discussion.
Any other reports? And, uh, report to city officers? All right, we will move to public comment. No public comment. We'll move to old business. First up is business updates.
Uh, we've got a pretty good business updates, uh, from discussions that we've had, uh, with the good numbers that we've had, probably in the last, what do you say, Mayor, four weeks, we've had a pri- a pretty good run. Uh, more people have been, uh, willing to go out, and they feel more at ease to go out. So, our businesses have seen numbers increase, which is really good. Um, so, you kind of see those things tied hand in hand with, uh, our COVID status and where we're at with numbers. With them being the way they've been, um, specifically, you talked like a lot of our restaurants, uh, they've had really good numbers, really good attendance. That's really good for us. Uh, the key thing that we need to remember, if we do kind of flip-flop back from a yellow to an orange possibly, and that could happen, uh, we need to remind people that if they don't feel comfortable going out, there's always those options that you don't have to go in person. I know that's something that we, you know, I've kind of asked you to make sure that people know that they can get gift certificates, they could get carryout, they could do curbside. Our businesses are willing to do absolutely anything, but in discussions with them in the last couple of weeks, since we met last time, with the numbers being the way they are, with the switch to yellow, they've seen an increase. That's very good for our area.
Okay, and that's the metrics of.
Yeah, it kind of goes in the county metrics too. So, obviously, we're yellow. Um, and the key thing that we've got going there, um, obviously, our numbers have been fantastic. One of the biggest things is our positivity rate has dropped drastically. It's almost dropped five points since our last meeting. Um, and that hasn't been too long. Um, some of the key things, um, today, we hit five percent positivity. That's the first time since, I think, about the summer that we've hit that. Uh, we're under a hundred active cases. Um, that's the first time since we went above a hundred cases, and that was about three, uh, three and a half months ago. Um, those are really good numbers to see. Uh, that means that Knox County's doing something right, Vincent's is doing something right. Um, and when you look at kind of the national statistics, Indiana's in the top five in vaccination, and Knox County's number one in vaccination. So, good things are happening here. So, we've got to keep, you know, our foot on the gas pedal here. We've got to keep encouraging people to get vaccinated, encourage people to follow the protocols, because we want that sense of normal. We want to be able to have those events. We want people to be able to, uh, freely go out to their restaurants and their favorite businesses. So, we've got some good numbers there. Also, the thing to remember too, you could see us kind of go back and forth from yellow to orange, which obviously, we would prefer to stay in yellow, maybe even get closer to blue, but those numbers are pretty tough to get by, and especially our cases per a hundred thousand. Um, we were right underneath at this time, which allowed us to go to yellow, but that's still a very thin number that could, if you see it, jump up. We'd go back into it. So, we're right on that cusp, but with the other numbers, everything's trending in the direction that we want to see, and that's a huge positive note. Now, there is some clarification that needs to come out, because I know, um, on the state side, they had an increase in deaths in a lot of counties, not just in Knox County. On last Thursday, they added a thousand five hundred seven historical deaths that they did in an audit. Um, and they had a press release on that. It was still kind of vague, um, and then they kind of updated those things. What they did is, they kind of audited through every death certificate, and if, you know, COVID was a cause or, uh, probable cause to that, that was added to that. There was also a backlog on electronic, um, death certificates that needed filed. They were kind of going to a new system. So, we did see a jump in that, and I know some people were confused about that. I know I called the mayor immediately, like, what in the world is going on? And Dr. Stewart's explained this on the radio a couple of times. That's, that's what happened. They did a year-end audit, they got those numbers, uh, and it wasn't just us that saw that increase. It was basically every county in Indiana saw that increase, and what they're referring to as, uh, historical deaths that they added into there. So, I wanted to make sure that that was clarified. So, if you guys get questions on that, uh, you know how to answer that and know where to guide people through that. Obviously, that's not the best news, but that's probably the worst out of all the news that we have COVID-related. So, um, hopefully, we keep seeing this trend as we keep moving forward, and our next meeting, we have even better numbers.
And I might add to that, this afternoon, Good Samaritan Hospital gave their ten thousand vaccine. So.
Right.
And I don't, I'm not for sure how many the, the, uh, county's clinic has given, but Good Sam's gave them ten thousand as of today.
It's incredible.
Isn't that your good news?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. First up is ordinance three, twenty twenty-one, and ordinance of Vincent's Common Council, Vincent's, Indiana, amending the zoning of real estate in Vincent's Knox County, Indiana, intersection of Hart Street and eleven.
Make a motion to read and approve ordinance three, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salters, sent by Vice President Grove to read and approve ordinance three, twenty twenty-one, and then it will refer to area plan, correct? Correct. Ordinance number three, twenty twenty-one, ordinance of the Vincent's Common Council, Vincent's, Indiana, amending the zoning of real estate in Vincent's Knox County, Indiana, as follows. There's four parcels containing sections one, two, and three. This is a request due from R one to C one. Right now, those lots are vacant, and there's a pending sale, and if it's rezoned to commercial, then the sale will close, and there'll be a business put there. Okay, discussion?
Uh, just, I think this is exciting news for us. Uh, those lots, if, I think most people are familiar with them, you don't realize you are. You drive by them almost every day on Hart Street. They've been vacant for a number of years. Uh, I always just assumed they were commercial. Uh, it shows you what assumptions get you. It's good that this person is moving forward to rezone those. Uh, it sits on a high-traffic area. Um, I'm excited about the possibility of business. Now, it will vote and decide, go send it to area plan, and then it comes back to us to make the decision.
Yeah, I mean.
That's all I got, man.
It's great news.
It is fantastic news.
Any other discussion?
Question.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by vote of seven to zero, this ordinance passes first reading and will be referred to area plan. Next is ordinance four, twenty twenty-one, and ordinance of the Vincent's Common Council, Vincent's, Indiana, amending the zoning of real estate in Vincent's Knox County, Indiana, at four twenty-one North Seventh.
Make a motion to read and approve ordinance four, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by President Salters, sent by Vice President Grove to read and approve ordinance four, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number four, twenty twenty-one, and ordinance of Vincent's Common Council, uh, amending the zoning of real estate in the city of Vincent's, containing sections one, two, and three, and in this case, this is the old design nook that was commercial, and they want it, need to go back to residential. We returned to its original use. They're here today.
Okay, discussion?
No, I mean, that's a simple enough change.
Is this, will this go back to single-family?
Are you guys moving there?
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, welcome to the neighborhood.
How friendly of you.
Yeah, man. Super excited about that too. That's awesome news.
Welcome wagon.
The welcoming crew.
Okay, another discussion.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
And by vote of seven to zero, first reading of ordinance four, twenty twenty-one passes. Next is Andrew Jandrowski, update on first city public sculptures.
Yep. And before you get started, Mr. Jandrowski, I can't thank you enough for kind of the vision that you had on this project. Um, when you discussed it first with us, um, it sounded fantastic, but to see it in its totality here, um, man, I, I can't think of anything but a smashing success that this has been, and what the people of Vincent's, they've just truly enjoyed it. Um, so, thank you for kind of putting that project out there and letting us be a part of that.
Thank you. Uh, in fact, that's the first thing I wanted to do is thank, thank the, uh, mayor and the city council, uh, for, for supporting us and what we were trying to do. I, we have a committee of about, um, nine people. So, uh, just not me, but it's, it's all of us together, and particularly the four galleries that are in town, the Sherwood Cliff Gallery, the, um, uh, Art Space and, and Open Gallery and the Northwest Territory Art Guild. And the Art Guild, uh, has basically contracted us to run, Art Space of Vincent's, to run the gallery because of our experience. So, I especially appreciate their ability to use us, uh, under their, um, uh, their, their non, uh, nonprofit status. They're twenty-one, three, uh, they're nonprofit status. Uh. So, I thank you for initial, uh, jumpstart, uh, last year, about this time, uh, and, uh, you know, and, uh, that grant provided us with a lot of credibility to reach out to the Indiana Arts Council, uh, which receives funding from taxes and from the National Associate, uh, National Endowment for the Arts, uh, which gives us further credibility, uh, to other local donors, uh, like Duke Energy, Knox County Foundation, Futaba Corporation, and Max, uh, Matt Hendrickson Cement, uh, and, and Vision Communities, uh, which is an Indianapolis firm that owns Clark's Crossing, and I Works for letting us use their land, uh, and sixty and other smaller cash and in-kind donors. Uh, so, that two thousand dollars that you initially allowed us to use, uh, last year, uh, brought in much more money to Vincent's than we normally would have gotten, or at least into the project. Uh, special thanks to Dave Roligan and John Sprague, both of whom were very busy at the time. I needed them, but worked to accommodate our needs that, uh, that allowed the project to move forward at critical times. And Steve Beeman, who assisted us in, uh, locating one of the spaces that we used. Uh, when the city awarded this money, no one knew what the year would be like in twenty twenty, and much of our premise was about community enhancement. But the pandemic, the April storm, and the economic fallout, social distancing, isolation, tension between those who trust science and those, those who don't, uh, and many other issues, all, all kind of took hold of our lives, and all of them, uh, were local and national tragedies, in my view. They have brought out the best and worst of many people. First Fridays have been postponed, at least until this coming September, uh, if we can, if we can, um, uh, achieve herd immunity and, uh, and, and, and can do it safely. Uh, I don't want to be responsible for someone going to the hospital to come and see art. Uh, but at the same time, I realize that it's an important focus on First Fridays for the businesses in town who benefit from, uh, having our First Fridays. I'm very aware of that, but I want to do it safely. Uh, the project then, uh, has taken on new functions. It has become a primary source in Vincent's for viewing art, because all the galleries are closed. Uh, but more importantly, a distraction during the pandemic, something positive, imaginative, uh, to enter people's psyche. Judging from the responses that we have had, it has been a positive experience for people. Uh, and we've got wonderful coverage from Jenny McNeese and, and Jill Irwin's coverage in the Sun Commercial. Mark Lang covered it with the radio, uh, on the radio with Wisdom and W A O V, W T H I and Ter Hope, Hope picked it up as well. In the spring, I hope to create some nice images for sculpture magazine that has an international, uh, circulation, because I think, uh, the work, at least some of the work that we have on, on tap here are, 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 should be internationally recognized. Uh, as soon as the new sculpture went up, people would call me or email me and immediately took a walk to see what went up, what was installed. During the installations, people would stop at the site and chat. I would jokingly tell them that I was building a hot dog stand, and then I'd tell them what I was really doing, and that would set up a conversation, and, and they would talk about the location and the history of it, and, and it just kind of made a nice feeling between, uh, the people that would come by and, and, uh, and, and, and then they would go on, and then they'd later see the sculpture. Uh, mentions have been made on social media as well. I have nothing but comp, compliment, I've, I had nothing but compliments from, uh, from spearheading the, the project, but I have had much help from the city, from V U, contractors, uh, and, and my committee of nine, and feel that it has been a wonderful experience and worth all the work, uh, for the community. We have already begun working to, toward this year's batch of sculptures, and would appreciate your help again. Other people have done, um, this sort of thing for other cities, say that it really builds every year. Because of the size of our community and the fact that we are trying to recover from COVID and economic pressures, we might find this to be a true, uh, true, we might find it hard to, uh, find this, uh, true here and now. If it is possible to get the seed money, we have learned a great deal from last year and would like to give it another shot. Uh, the number of sculptures will depend on what funds we can raise and the quality of the work we can find. I wouldn't expect we would do many more than the seven we have, but those seven would add to what we did this year, or last year, and, and it, it will make quite an impression, you know, uh, for visitors as, as things start loosening up and opening up. Uh, they will be very surprised that a little town our size will have so many sculptures, uh, in the public view. Uh, the, so, this year, we would like to ask for, uh, seven thousand dollars, uh, to use, since other sources have been used last year, um, in town, and we might find it hard, uh, to find as much help, uh, this year, because this would be our second year. I don't know how these things work. I'm very inexperienced about that. Uh, but we certainly will try to get what we can, uh, and we were very successful last year, so I'm hoping that we can be as successful this year. Uh, are there any questions? Yeah, that, that's a primary focus from Indiana Arts Council, is that they would like, uh, COVID has hit the arts. Uh, for instance, our gallery hasn't made any money since, uh, last March. We've been operating for free. Uh, we've been paying a rent, and we've been paying advertising, uh, to keep this, keep, keep in the public notice, but, uh, uh, we, we have not made a cent since last March, uh, first Friday. And so, uh, all artists are, are really, uh, hurting. It's, it's one of the kind of silent, uh, silent minorities that are, are hurting, because, uh, artists don't tend to make all that visible. Uh, so, the emphasis by the state is to try to get as many Indiana sculptors as possible. Um, last year, only one sculptor had applied from Indiana. Uh, there was another person from South Carolina who applied, no, North Carolina, and, um, he was originally from Indiana, but he now lives in North Carolina. So, he was anxious to deliver a sculpture and then see family. But those are the only two that had a relationship with Indiana. Uh, the rest of them came from as far places as Oregon. Uh, the, the sculpture Truth that many of you might have seen on the, on the Coberton Boulevard, that one is from Oregon, and he's planning to come back. He's very excited about Vincent's, and he's planning to, to return to work with children, uh, because he has done a project with children in the past and loves it, and he had them design a sculpture, and then he created the sculpture and put it up in his hometown of Hood River. And so, what I, I said, uh, so I, I asked him if he'd be willing to do that here, and we could use the university facilities, uh, sculpture facilities there, and he could just make up, you know, work with kids, get a design together from their work, and then, and then make a sculpture, uh, sometime this spring. So, that, that is, that, that will be kind of reaching out to the, to another population and hopefully involve their parents to, to come and see the sculpture and become aware of the sculpture. And that's one of the things we're trying to do this spring is that in our grant with the Arts Council, we, we, uh, had promised that we would try to reach out to, um, other communities, uh, uh, people with disabilities, people, uh, who normally don't go into galleries, uh. People with disabilities, people who normally don't go into galleries, elderly people. I think we got that one covered because it's right by Clark's Crossing. And we see wheelchairs go by these sculptures every day. We live right a block away from Clark's Crossing, so I can watch them go by the sculptures. And even people from Pianca Show come and take a look at the sculptures. So we've got, that will be very good on the grant, in our final report in the grant. But there are other communities that we need to reach out to, you know, even people in the edge of town, people in the county. In the summertime, we'd like to reach out to some of the migrant workers and try to get them involved somehow. So if any of you have any ideas to share with me about that, I could consider it and try to get working on that as well. You can be part of the team.
So Mr. Janowski, the increase in the amount from last year, why the big, big increase? Did I miss that?
Well, I primarily, I primarily felt that, first of all, I had a lot of help from the city. Last year, not only the 2,000, but I had a lot of, a lot of, I used up a lot of energy here as well as probably some more money. And I would like to just call that upfront and just, just, and in particular, because I don't know what to expect this year in terms of, I know Duke Energy will not, will not fund us again this year. They told me that upfront. They're going to give it to somebody else. And I understand that. And I don't know what some of the other donors will feel, whether they're going to feel committed to us or some other thing. And the other thing is the financial uncertainty for so many businesses in town who might need help and might find help or be looking for help. I understand all that.
Andy, can you give me a reminder of the total cost of the project last time?
Can you help me out?
Yeah, we raised almost $20,000 last time in cash contributions and also had some good income contributions involved.
And we haven't spent quite all of it, but I haven't, I haven't spent, I haven't done everything we're going to do. One thing that's going to go up with these sculptures are signs that will be interpretive signs to help people understand what they're looking at or with artist statements on the signs. And also I will list the donors and the, and the major donors. I'll even put their logos on. And I'll have the basic facts about each sculpture, its title, who made it, and that sort of thing. So that will be an expense. And then whatever we do for education and reaching out to the communities may involve some money, like the project with the children. We're going to have to buy some materials to make that sculpture and make a base for it. So that will be a little money. So we, we're almost spent out, but I think we have enough to accomplish those things, to finish up the project.
And have you reached out to any of the local businesses for donations or anything like that?
We have. There, I have 16 donors who have, you know, and I'll say I, but it was really the committee who kind of, kind of worked to find donors there. So that's, so 16 donated, some in kind, some in cash.
Well, I can assure you that the city engineer's office will work with you again.
Yes.
And probably get the same cooperation from that contractor.
John Sprague.
Yeah. And I can say that all of those sculptures are really, all those sculptures are really nice. It really adds to the community. What'd you have, six total last year? Six sculptures total?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah. There's one.
One at I Works.
One at I Works and then there are three on Culberton or near Culberton and three at Clark's Crossing.
Okay, three at Clark's Crossing.
The one in Clark's Crossing is, there's one in Clark's Crossing that's along Fifth Street.
Okay.
Fifth and Perry, Fifth and Perry Street. So more, a lot of people might not have seen that one because it's kind of off the main drag.
Right. And I do think that really added to the Riverwalk because you've got the three down towards Hart Street and the Riverwalk. It's really added to that, so.
And I was kind of talking to the side, kind of brainstorming as we go along where we would find this. Off the top of my head, we've got a couple of spots, but we'll, I would think that we're going to find a way to be able to do something like this. Now, I know I'm speaking for myself, but I think this has been a huge asset to the city of Vincennes. My two little boys, they're not really the most artistic individuals, a little bit wild, but they love going to look at these things. They love getting out and seeing it and talking about it, those kind of things that, you know, I didn't really think my kids were really into. But it's those kind of people that you're reaching out to and not just a pure artist. And those things to be able to offer the city of Vincennes, I mean, it's a quality life thing. I mean, we offer all these different amenities, but things like this, people do go out, they do see it. And you made a great point because a lot of studios are shut right now and you're not able to do things. This is a major form of art that people get to go out and just enjoy. It's outside, it's safe. It's one of the better things to do when you're, you know, during the pandemic. So kind of discussing with the mayor and Councilman Grove, who's our tourism committee chair. Where would we find these funds? Off the top of my head, we've got a couple of spots to look at, but we've got spots that we will continue to look at to be able to figure this out.
So I think maybe the tourism committee needs to meet and have a discussion and bring something back to this board.
Yeah, that'd probably be a good idea.
I would, I would echo what Tim said. You know, you said bad timing. I think it was perfect timing to do outside art. My daughter, who's 10, knows where every piece is and what each one of them recall. And I think it brought, as my wife and I were out riding our bikes or with our daughter and it gave us a reason to go down that road. And I think that, you know, there's people that are intimidated about going in a gallery. A lot of people don't want to do it. They think it's stuffy or whatever reason. And maybe they brought that on themselves a little bit, the galleries have. But this gives people an opportunity to do that. And I appreciate the work that John Sprague did, the city, you, Matt, and all the people you listed. It really has added a lot to our downtown area and just our community in general. And so I hope that the committee comes back with a favorable, a favorable recommendation and a way to be able to help you and fund this. So we'll wait on word from them.
How do you determine the location of these sculptures where they are to be placed?
Well, I'm an artist myself. In fact, I was trained as a sculptor. And so I look for, first of all, safety. Second of all, I look for an environment that has some aesthetics to it. I want the sculpture to enhance the location, but I want the location to also enhance the sculpture. I don't want the sculpture to be in a, next to a gas station or, you know, in a parking lot. I want it to be in a place that it will be respected. And I find that usually artwork is treated well when we respect it, when we install it. I think, I think good art has the power to get that respect. And so, and so, so location is very important. And I would, I would, I'm going to consider, I would like to consider maybe putting another one near Culberton in the grass someplace just to fill out that space just a little bit more than it is. But I'm open for suggestions too. I know all of you live in different neighborhoods. I wouldn't mind expanding into your neighborhood if that, if there is a place that could take it. And I also, my first, my first, my first intuition was to try to get it in highly trafficked areas like Sixth Street. That's why I begged the guy in Indianapolis to, the owner in Indianapolis, to let me put some sculpture there. And Culberton has been a beautiful place for people who walk and run and ride bikes through and it is a little secluded. We've had one sculpture marked on and it was the piece called Truth. But I have, I've not tried to make a big deal out of it. I just called the sculptor, asked if I can try to fix it. And he said, oh, sure, go ahead. And, you know, he told me how would he use them. And I tried, but I didn't get as far as I really wanted to. So when he comes in the spring, I'm going to ask him to do it.
I have, I'm not in any way condoning that behavior. That's awful. But when we do these things, we have to expect those and we have to, to be prepared for that kind of thing.
And the sculptors are responsible for their work. I'm not, you know, we're not responsible for, I out of courtesy have, have, since he brought his piece all the way from Oregon, as a courtesy, I did pay for materials to try to fix his piece, but I'm going to wait for him to do it.
So President Salters, do you need to make a motion or something to move this to committee?
No.
Or we can just tell them to move to?
Just tell Councilman Grove to get on it and figure it out.
We will meet soon and I think you've made a great choice on where to put these and how they all fall within my district, which, you know, is the right choice. So we'll get with the committee meeting and we'll find something.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, next up is Michelle Smith, Moss County Solid Waste District.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me. I know Mr. Salters and Mayor Yocum have probably sing our praises every month. So I didn't know how familiar you all were with the Solid Waste District, so that's why I put together this little packet for you. I tried to keep it as short as I could, but there's, we wear a lot of hats. We do a lot of things and I didn't know how familiar you were with what we do and who we are. So if you have questions throughout, just give me a shout and stop me. But essentially, the reason I came today is because my Solid Waste District Board has decided that it's time to take a look at our user fee. So on this second, it's the second page, like if you flip it up, you can kind of see the user fee information. The first page is just sort of our mission, who we are, what we do, some administrative things on here, how the district was formed in 1991. But the second page is what I kind of wanted you to look at real quick. If you look at the funding information there, so when the district was formed in 1991, because of Indiana Code, each county in Indiana had to come up with their own solid waste district. We were funded by tipping fees at the landfill. When the landfill closed in 1998, then the solid waste district became funded by the county general, which didn't last very long. They said, we are not going to fund you, so you have to come up with your own funding. That is where this solid waste user fee came from. So it was established using Indiana Code 13-21-13. And that was in June of 2003. It was set for $15 and it is on every parcel or office. It's built into the property tax bill. So the county puts that fee for us onto the property tax bill as a, it just as a mechanism for us to get that, that fee billed out to the public, to everybody in the county. And so underneath here, you can see what that user fee has done for us. So in 2019, we collected 266,751. There's a little bit of, the auditor's office tells me there's a little bit of like fees and things when people don't pay them, so that's why it's an odd number. And then in 2020, it went up just a little bit because the auditor's office was gracious enough to go through all the parcels and make sure that we didn't miss any because there were houses being torn down that lost a user fee. But there were also lots of houses in the county who, that were being built that didn't have the user fee attached to them. So that's why there's a little bit of an increase there. If you see the actual amount spent though, those are the actual amounts spent by the Solid Waste District to conduct business. And right now, we're operating on the bare minimum. And the things that you guys might be interested in for the city of Vincennes is, you know, you're talking about making Vincennes aesthetically pleasing and we want to bring more people here and we want to have all of these, you know, things to entice people to come and live in the city, right? And so curbside recycling is one of our busiest, not busiest, but our biggest, one of our biggest expenses is the recycling, which it should be. So in 2019, everything sort of changed for us. Recycling used to be collected for free. So in 2019, Republic Services said, not any longer. You are going to have to pay by weight for recycling. That included the city's curbside where, you know, the street department had picked everything up and they were getting billed. So Mayor Yocum came to the Solid Waste District Board and said, hey, is there anything Solid Waste can do to help us out? So we assume the cost of the disposal of the recycled materials. We provide the bins, all the recycling bins for the curbside program as well. So that is an expense that we didn't have prior to 2019. So up until that point, we were, we were doing okay. We were kind of breaking even. So we've come to a point where we've been, as a board, we've been discussing increasing the user fee for a couple of years now. I mean, it's been 18 years and it hasn't been reviewed or looked at. So the board has decided that now is the time to do that. And so what we're proposing is a $5 increase per year on those user fees. And the back page kind of outlines, there's an estimated $78,000 that would be generated from that $5 increase, which would allow us to do these six things that we've outlined here. In addition to the curbside recycling program that we help fund for the city, we also do the household hazardous waste collection. We have a permanent drop-off site on Tuesdays and Thursdays that's open nine to five year round. And that household hazardous waste site fulfills the requirements for the city's MS4 coordinator for their household hazardous waste needs, I guess. It fulfills that, it ticks that box for them. We also do have an interlocal with the, with the city and with the water department to fulfill their education needs for their MS4 program. So you might be asking, well, how are they paying bills if they're over budget? So interlocal agreements like the one we have with the water department and we've also had some interlocal agreements with the county that sort of supplements our budget. So we've been breaking even pretty much. But we are not at a point where we can expand any services. And I don't know how many of you all are recyclers in here. I'm hoping that's everybody. If not, my girl Kathy can get you some bins.
It's your favorite thing to do, right Kathy?
Yeah. So, but if you are an avid recycler, you know that Vincennes, if you live in the city limits, you have a pretty good, we have a pretty good system for you. If you live outside of city limits, you're very limited as to where you can go. Prior to January 2020, everybody in the county could take all of your recycled materials to Republic Services for free drop-off. They stopped that in January 2020 and said, no more because of contamination and because the cost was going up because that was a free service that they were providing to the public. So when they closed, that made it really, really tricky for anybody living in Vincennes Township or anywhere else in the county to recycle. And even a lot of folks who live in city limits were using that drop-off just for the convenience of it because they were open nine to five. They were open on Saturdays. They didn't have to remember to take it out to. They didn't have to remember to take it out to the curb and that kind of thing. Since they stopped doing that, since they closed, and because after the pandemic, I know that the sale of those recycling bins has gone up quite a bit, because people were wanting to recycle at home. Curbside and our drop-off sites were not accessible. We had, we have one in Sandburn, we have one in Monroe City, we had one in Decker. And those would serve us outside of, you know, out in the, outlying county areas. We did have to close one site, because we don't have running water or a fenced-in area that's safe and secure for our staff. So right now, I'm going to open it up to questions. If you have questions for me, I know there's a lot of information on here. Essentially, we're just kind of briefing you on what our plan is and what we do provide for the city, but also the county. As of right now, any recycling that's happening in Knox County is because of us. It's because we're paying for it. So every school in the county has been offered recycling services. We do in-school, we did in-school before, before the pandemic, free education programs, K-12. I've done some at VU, I do civic groups. And, you know, these are, this is where we need to be. We need to focus on that education, but we also need to focus on our community and offering accessible recycling to everybody. You know, we get so many phone calls about, where can I recycle? Even people who live in the city. So I know I threw a lot at you, and there's a lot on this sheet. The last page is basically just our goals and what we would like to do.
So Michelle, our fees are, in Knox County, are fifteen dollars, right? And I know you listed some other fees across Indiana.
Yes.
Are those the next lowest besides us?
Those are, yes. So a solid waste district can be funded in, in a few different ways. It can be funded through the tipping fees at a landfill, a user fee, or it can be funded by the county. So a lot of, a lot of districts are funded either by tipping fees or the county. I checked around the ones closest to us. Davies County has a landfill, so they're funded by their tipping fees. The Solid Waste District in Davies County actually just runs their landfill, and every solid waste district is set up differently. The city of Washington actually does all the recycling and all of the household hazardous waste collection there. Their MS four coordinator does all of that. Dubois County, they're funded from the commissioner's budget. So it just kind of varies. So we set up this user fee, and these are the ones that I was able to obtain throughout the county, but yes, we are fifteen dollars. The next lowest is Miami County at thirty dollars a year for the services.
Yeah, so even with this proposed increase, you're still at the bottom.
Yes, yeah.
The very bottom.
Absolutely. And, you know, and this is something that, you know, this user fee probably should, we've been talking about it for a few years now. And, you know, it probably should have been discussed before. It's been a long time coming. So I didn't know Mayor Yocum or-
I can just say that, you know, Republic used to take all our recycling for free from the city. When that ended, I went to Solid Waste, talked to Michelle, and they agreed to pay for that for us. They also agreed to purchase those totes for the city that we sell for five dollars. And now I know you're going to say, if somebody's buying them for, why are you selling them for five dollars? That helps us with some of our expense as far as our recycling program, where we have six to nine employees every Monday, the whole day, that go around the city and pick up the recycling. So we still have an expense in it, but they are covering a large portion just by paying the dumping fees.
And that's something that, that wasn't an issue before.
Right, that wasn't an issue till this year, yeah.
Yeah, and so, and, and also for us, that was an added expense that we didn't have before either, because our trailers, we also have to pay the empty fee of those. And all the schools, we also provide those big open-top roll-offs for recycling at all the schools. It didn't make sense for me to go into the schools and teach them how to recycle, why they should recycle, what to recycle, when the schools couldn't afford to recycle themselves. So we provided all the schools with recycling bins if they wanted to do it, as well as Republic Services container. But we also have to pay, we have to have a drop, there's a drop fee to stop and pick it up, but then we also pay for the disposal of that material by weight. So that's an extra expense that we didn't have before either, so.
Along with that, actually, this year, the city has probably picked up more recycling as well as more trash, because people are staying home with COVID. So it's all increased.
Absolutely.
And I think this goes back to, I believe Mayor Hatcher was when curbside recycling started. And I believe it started because the cities were required to reduce their, what they were taking to landfills.
Yeah, and I mean, and it's a, I mean, the state of Indiana has a fifty percent recycling rate goal. We are way underneath that. I will tell you that in Knox County, for two thousand and nineteen, we, we, I won't say like totally recycled, because part of it is our HHW, our disposal of HHW items, which is just proper disposal, but we're sitting at about a hundred and sixty tons of material that was diverted from the landfill, which is pretty great for Knox County, I think. But we can do so much better. And the only way we can do better is by increasing this fee. Like I say, right now, we are maxed out. We're over budget, just doing the bare minimum of having two recycle spots. What we'd ultimately like to have is a sort of user-friendly, more accessible, centrally-located facility that we can house all of our programming into one place. We can have recycling, we can have household hazardous waste, we can have an education center in all of our offices. Right now, all of those things are separate, and we're paying rent, and we're, you know, have an agreement here and an agreement here. And so we'd like to bring all of that together. And if we're able to do that, then a recycling center that is either in the city or just outside of the city limits, people can use that, they can use that free drop-off service. The businesses can bring their cardboard boxes to us for us to recycle, which is a big deal. Right now, the businesses in town don't have a place to take it. They all used to take it to Republic Services. So unless they want to drive it to Bicknell and use the recycling center there, or they can take it to Monroe City or to Sandburn, those are their only options. So we would really like to be able to do more.
Yeah, I mean, the key thing is, is not just continuing what you do, but to be able to expand it. And specifically for us as a board, is what can we do that benefits the city of Vincennes? And how do we improve that in that area? And approved accessibility to recycling, that's at the top of the list of one of the things the mayor and I have discussed in these meetings. And I know in the end, you know, this vote doesn't come down to the council, but you've been willing to come to the council to explain what's going on, because the mayor and I did say that we want our council on board if we do go to this. Now, I think expanded recycling accessibility is a huge plus for us. A huge plus for us. And I, I think a lot of you and the discussions that you've had with our citizens would agree that that's something that the citizens of Vincennes want and want to see happen. So to be able to lay it out and specifically put out, like, here's the fee that we have, this is what we're asking for, this will allow us to be able to expand those services while we're still really managing our money well and at the bottom when it comes to user fees for a district, I mean-
Right.
-great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I must say that you guys, you and your crew, do an amazing job.
We try. We try, yeah.
And you've always been willing to work with the city.
Well, and I mean, you know, Vincennes, Knox County, everybody in Knox County. We help Vincennes, we help Bicknell. What we would really like to do is, is help all the towns in the county as well. Some of them have had our recycling trailers before. And like I said, we've had to pull those for various reasons, but we would like to have those, you know, we would like to make recycling accessible for everybody in the county. So are there any more questions for me?
And as long as you guys are on board, I mean, at our next Solid Waste meeting, the mayor and I will throw our support behind this as the city representatives for this. And I think most of you are, and I know most of the discussions that we've had, recycling accessibility was at the top of the list of things that you guys wanted to see.
Great. That makes me happy. Okay.
Everybody good?
Everybody good.
All good. Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
We'll move on to claims.
So if I get this right, make an or, a motion, I almost said order, to pay claims in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove, to pay the claims in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-two cents. Are there any questions on claims?
Question?
Mr. Ravelat?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Okay.
Seven to zero. Claims are paid. Anything under miscellaneous? Not, we'll move back to public comment. Public comment, we'll go first for good of the order.
All right, Councilman Grove, District One.
I'll use my time to throw a shout-out to the street department. They've had some snow this week. They've put in a lot of extra time. We appreciate it. And looking at camera at home, looks like we're getting in quite a bit of snow right now. I know they put in a, a lot of extra hours. They've done a great job.
Yeah, I mean, our roads have been really good. They've kept those things really clean. They've been out working hard. Uh, District Two.
Simon's Driving School just celebrated their first anniversary, and they, we had a ribbon-cutting Friday for them. And they are very complimentary of how the, the community of Vincennes has got behind them, and they're, they're out of Terre Haute, but actually, they said they have more business up here, down here than in Terre Haute, and they, they have a local instructor, and they just, they want to give back to the community in some way. They have a, a program where they, part of the fee goes back to doing that in the Terre Haute schools, and they want to do that here, so you may be hearing more about that soon. Lowe's is in their second phase of internal remodel, but the reason I bring it up is because they, they're redoing their cabinets and all those, that things back in the, the back of the store. And some of those items are just outdated, so they're donating those to nonprofits in the community, which, which I think that's great. They could just, some of them are being sold, but a lot of them are being donated. I thought, I thought it was great that they were doing that for the nonprofits in the community, especially with trying times with finances. And over in Greg Park recently, a tree was, was planted in the memory of Art Cortez. He coached and taught at VU PE classes from seventy-four to two thousand. If you know anything about Art, or actually was a pastor as well, had the privilege of, of being a student of his. And if you knew anything about, he was really cared about his students, and I thought that was, and about what the impact he made on VU and students. I thought that was really great that they did that and memorialized him and his, his contributions to the community.
All right, Councilman Stangle, District Three.
I'll go off what Councilman Grove mentioned about the street department. I was out and about quite a bit today, and I don't think I've seen one street or road that wasn't treated before this snow started. And I'm sure with the snowfall tonight, that they're going to be a lot busier, scraping and plowing snow. But also, I want to mention that when I was coming in, it was starting to get pretty slick, and really, if no one needs a kit out, don't, because the police department will also be busy working wrecks and slide-offs. And if they're bad enough, the fire department will be busy sending out their rescue trucks. So this kind of, this kind of weather just makes all of our departments very busy and busier than normal, and I appreciate all their hard work.
All right, Councilman Ravelat, District Four.
All right. I'm also very pleased that the COVID numbers are down far enough where we're in the yellow category now. And I'm happy that people can get out more and go into restaurants and places like that. But I also want to give a big shout-out to those people who, during this past year, before the, the customers were able to get out, the delivery people were able to get out and bring merchandise and food and groceries and things like that to us. And, and it just, I think that is part of why people are going back to these businesses now, because they were treated so well. I know personally, I've had a lot of deliveries that the people were dressed very well. They wore masks, they were very polite. And I just want to give a shout-out to those people. I don't think they get enough credit, and I, I think we owe them a big debt of gratitude.
Thank you. Councilman Lau, District Five.
Absolutely. Hey, I do want to give a, a shout-out to Knox County in general for everybody going in and getting their shot. I just think, you know what? It, it takes everybody doing their portion, and they are doing their portion, between the hospital and the health department giving the shots, and those people making sure that they've got lined up. I, I really do appreciate my friends and my family and my neighbors all going out to get that. I do want to shout-out to the, again, to the, I had it marked down here for the street department. I've got a sixteen-year-old boy who needs to learn how to drive in snow, and there's no opportunity, because the street department's got it cleared. So not to say that I need that opportunity, but I'm just letting you know that we, we really do appreciate it, because I even thought about that as the kids were coming home the last snow. I called my daughter and said, hey, and she said, boy, they're out, Dad, already. I said, she hadn't, didn't have any problems getting home, and I said, that's great. So there you go.
Councilman McNeese.
Well, I had a, a long conversation with a, a business in downtown Vincennes that although they, I'll let them make any announcements that are moving forward, they are ninety-nine percent sure they're going to be opening up a corner store, a bodega, a grocery store in our downtown. Small, but a corner store. What that is, to me, indicates a greater thing. And so this is really my shout-out about that, is one, it's market-driven. Grocery stores don't pop up unless there's people around to buy the food and, and to do those things. So increasing the residential neighborhoods and increasing the amount of residences in our downtown is what allows this to happen. It also goes back to what we've been talking about a long time now. People, residents, living in an area creates business. And, and one of those reasons we want, we've pushed so hard for housing in the last couple of years, is because we want to increase the population, because we understand that with more people comes more business, and this is a direct result. I hope that that group will be making an announcement soon. I think maybe a couple people know who that is. But just a, an, an excellent news story for downtown Vincennes. I mean, I think the last corner store we had in downtown Vincennes was Borden's Grocery. You know, and, and think about how well it was used at one time, too. So this is, that's fantastic news. That's it.
That's real good news. I'm real excited about that one.
Did I take yours?
No, 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 you didn't. But I'll, I'll thank you, I'll thank you for sitting on area plan for all of us. I do appreciate that.
We were watching with you, though.
We were, I, we were there in spirit.
Yeah. I got text messages from people.
But the big thing for me this week, I think when we had our first big snow, there was a video that circulated of our, our local police department playing, playing in the snow with our kids.
Yeah.
And it's things like that, I mean, that's what it's all about. We're a community that knows each other, that's with each other. Like, you know, you know each other's kids, you're friends with them. We go to work, we go to school, we go to the same grocery stores. I mean, to be able to see those kind of things and to, to see a glimpse of that, and people shared that video out and they commented on it. And I was glad people got to see that, a, a, as, in my role in the schools, I get to bounce around from every building. And one of the things that our police officers do is if they got a little bit of time, they do walk through the schools, or they go out at recess with the kids. And, and to see the kids' faces and smile and know that, you know, our officers are there, and they're spending time with them, and they're talking with them. I mean, their eyes just light up, and those relationships, they don't just last that time. They last over a period of time. And our community is comfortable with our police officers. They like it when they're around. It's a, it's a, it's a good thing. And that's just so, so important. And to kind of see that video that was shared out, I mean, I get to see that, you know, almost every day in the schools and be able to, for everybody to kind of see that experience. I mean, it was, it's, it's awesome to see. I mean, we've got great departments, and I'm always excited to see the work they do and the willingness they put forward to put the community above everything else. So that was my good news. Mayor, you want to go over the vaccines again? That's the great news.
Real quick, I want to mention that with our CARES dollars for businesses, we still have just under a hundred thousand dollars left for businesses to apply for. We have also notified the state that we intend to apply for more CARES dollars. The next time, we will apply for an additional one hundred and fifty thousand for a business and a hundred thousand for food pantries. That application, I believe, goes in this month, later this month?
I think it's March eleventh.
Okay, March eleventh. Also, here in the very near future, the city attorney and I have received a letter of a voluntary annexation of property at Hillcrest and Bruceville Road. So that, Mr. Roligan is working on all the steps we have to do to make sure that everybody's notified and everything's done properly for us to take that property into the city. And then again- And then again, I want to mention, Good Samaritan Hospital given their ten thousand shot today, and encourage anybody that, when it's your time to get your vaccine, that you get it.
It's a lot of good news today, a lot of good news today.
Okay, if nothing else, I just need a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Bingo, bango, guys.
Seven oh eight.
Everybody needs to be careful, because it is pretty bad out there. I need to do that.